Hey Todd. It's Alder Zopp. Can you hear me okay?
I can hear you.
Okay, cool. My handle is City of Beaver Dam. I'm from my city computer.
Alright.
Okay.
Good evening. It's 7:30 and this is the common council meeting for the City of Beaver Dam for January 5th, 2026. And we are going to start with the pledge of, or I'm sorry, start with roll call.
Beerman.
Here.
Bonnet.
Here.
Burnett.
Here.
Here.
Fisher. Clarity.
Here.
Ganski.
Here.
Hailey.
Here.
Keel.
Here.
Olson.
Present.
Perkins.
Here.
Wild.
Here.
Yuds.
Here.
Zopp.
Here.
Okay, next we're going to do the pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silent deliberation. Next up, we have our public comments section of our meeting. And I think we have eight people who would like to speak. And I think maybe it makes sense to group you by topic. So there's one person who signed up to talk about fraud and corruption. So why don't we start there? And just again, as a reminder, when you come to the mic, just say your name and we're.
Hi, my name's Jay Hafed. I've lived here my whole life in stuff and I met last year with Bobby Merrick and the police chief. And I explained to them about the flood plain maps in the city of Beaver Dam. Okay, they are, it's, they are fraud. Okay, they conspired to, between the DNR and somebody here from the city. They say in the maps that the dam does not exist. Okay, and the reason they did this because the shoe factory building was in the flood plain. It's in what they call the hydraulic shadow of the dam failure. Okay, by saying that the dam doesn't exist in those maps, which cost, I would say, a minimum of $50,000 to create the fraud. The whole city is responsible if there is a flood and any of these places are damaged. Because if you're in, you're in the flood plain, you're required to have insurance. Okay, flood insurance on your property for your loan and stuff. Okay, now they filled the floodway in with lead paint contaminated fill. They couldn't fill it in at all. The permit, I got a copy of that, I showed them. They could not put anything in there. It's against the law. You can't do anything that alters the flow, increases the velocity of the water. Okay, the reason was the shoe factory is a fraud itself because it couldn't legally be developed. Okay, and not only that, they took the money from the flood victims and gave it to the developer. We're $200 million from Milwaukee. Okay, this whole thing is one of the worst crimes against small business in the history of America. And it needs to be addressed. You got a city attorney right there. Okay, listen to this and do your job. Okay, Trent Campbell was the one that pushed for the lead paint contaminated fill to be put in the river. I got the emails. I showed them that there. It could, they hired a company out of Chicago to do the demolition work on it. And they filled the whole river in with all that. Okay, there's bottom feeding fish. It could be eating that and spreading it all the way down. They go up and down and back and forth. And as a mayor, it's your job, number one priority, is to make sure public safety for the citizens of the community. And I went and told you that. Did you contact the DNR like I told you to?
I'm, I'm sorry, I should have gone over the rules at the beginning. Number one, as a public comments section, members of the council.
The city can say whatever they want, the rules, this is reality and this is the truth. Okay, now you yourself, when you come in and talk to somebody.
Mr. Hafed?
Yeah.
The reality and legality in this meeting right now is that the.
You don't want the people to know.
The council and the mayor are not allowed.
He was at the meeting with me and you. This is not a.
Sir, I'm going to ask you to leave. Sir, I'm going to ask you, you need to sit down.
That's what you're doing.
Or you need to leave.
Come on, let's hear it. Stand up for your sake. How about the little kids? That didn't bother them at all, did it?
Again, I apologize. I should have gone over the rules. Every speaker is entitled to speak for two minutes. And at, at a public comments section, neither the council or city staff are allowed to respond. It's just an opportunity for us to collect comments. So, okay, next up, I think. There's one person who would like to speak about the lead in the water. So would you like to go next, Pam?
My name, my name is Janet Stofflet.
And I'm, excuse me, can you just, the, the mic bends. Do you just want to put a little closer to your mouth?
I'm just concerned and a little overwhelmed at how this process that we're going to have to go through is going to go on. Does, do we know how big of an area is affected by this lead pipe problem in the town?
Okay, are you talking about the lead service lines?
Going into our homes.
Okay. Okay, yes. I wasn't clear what you were talking about, but yes.
I live in a, in an old part of town. And I'm just wondering how far the, the streets are affected, how far this all goes.
Can I, yeah, if you, the city is aware and we've addressed it. And why don't you meet with, this is our city administrator, Larry Burkey. He'd be happy to talk to you about it. We have a plan in place. In fact, at the committee meeting just before this meeting, they passed a resolution designed to deal with it. So yeah, so we, we know what you're talking about.
Okay.
There is a plan. We will be dealing with it.
Okay, I'll meet you later.
Okay, and then I believe. All the other ones have to do with the data center. So I guess I'll just start, start at the top of the list with Mr. Prescott Bulch. Or did I say that right?
Ah, but it's okay. Prescott Bulch, I live in the village of Caledonia. On behalf of the residents of Beaver Dam, I'd like to ask how the city council plans to get tax levy benefit out of the data center project. Your public statements indicate you are looking for the data center to increase the levy without raising individual taxes. But state law presents a challenge. New construction is use it or lose it. If you take it when it happens, though, the TID will still be open. Meta's tax payments will not contribute to the general fund levy until the TID closes currently set for 2046. If you take the new construction when it happens, you will get a higher levy. But every current resident's tax bill will rise because of the data center, a tough pill to swallow. If you don't take it when it happens, then you lose 90% of the new construction for purposes of raising the levy. At TID closure, you will get a measly 10% of that total, which in 2046 will be about 2% of your equalized value. And whether you take it or not, all that new equalized value from the data center will make it much harder to grow in the future. Something you were struggling to do before the data center. So the residents of Beaver Dam would like to know the answer to this question. Are you going to raise their taxes because of the data center? Or are you going to lose the opportunity to use the data center construction to raise the levy? State law doesn't seem to allow for having it both ways. The same question was recently posed to Port Washington and one of their city council members admitted they knew this was a problem. And that hope of legislative change was their strategy. Is hope your strategy too? Mount Pleasant recently added their first data center to the tax rolls, allowing them up to a 17% increase. They chose to raise current residents' general fund taxes by 8% and hoped that nobody would notice it was due to the data center. Is this your plan too? Your residents would really like to know. Thank you.
Okay, and next up is Mr. Steve Redusky.
Folks. So a lot of us have been showing up here redressing our grievances about this whole data center project. And we're given two minutes to come up here and speak and then sent back to our chairs. And the last meeting that I couldn't be here at, Meta was given an unfettered time to get up here and speak. We've asked for a town hall for you guys to be accountable where we can ask you questions. And nobody's responding. There was a complete lack of transparency. A lot of you know I've run for different offices here in town, have knocked a lot of doors. And those doors that I've been knocking, nobody knew about this data center before all of this went down. And I understand you tried to do your best for what you thought, but this has really opened up a bad situation for us. And it's a real lack of transparency. And we'd like the town hall meeting and we'd like some answers to people that have been sending emails. We, we'd like this public forum. And we think you ought to be willing to do that. Not just to put Meta up here to gaslight us on how they're going to create water for us. I mean, what a, so like, but some of you know that I'm going to run for mayor now. Because we want transparency. And this is, we expected from this body. And, and we'd like you to not just sit there and collect comments from us. This is our opportunity to redress our grievances and we'd like some answers from you on those. We'd like the town hall. We'd like a citizens group to be attached to this council to work with Meta. To navigate some of these things because we've gotten stuck. And I know Prescott's numbers, they, they don't lie. So we'd appreciate some answers. Thank you.
And just slight change in plans. What we would like to happen after the meeting. Let's see, Ms. Stofflet, if you could talk with, Jeremy, you want to raise your hand? He's our utilities director. He'll be able to answer all your questions. Because then Larry Burkey, our city administrator, for those people who are concerned with Mr. Bulch's comments about taxes in Beaver Dam. Larry said he would be happy to talk to those of you who have that concern and talk about the city's plans and our financial position when it comes to the data center. So, okay, next up is Mary Aplin.
Hi, I'm Mary Aplin. And since this whole data center thing came to be the AI component of the data center. I have read a lot and I bet all of you have too. I didn't know all the background and all the information. And I'm sure you guys are continuing to learn about it now. Because it's something our state is dealing with, our nation is dealing with. And I've come to realize there are so many questions. There's just. Now, I know I look like a smart person, but I don't feel like it when I read about the AI data centers. I just, it's just overwhelming and so much to worry about. Especially for me, the water is, is the big deal. I want my kids and my grandkids to have water. And the Great Lakes is a nat, you know, is one of our natural resources that everybody's after. You know, so I'm concerned about the water table and. Water that might come back into our system and can it be treatable? And lots of questions about water for me. But I know about the electrical use and how that pulls on our system. And what is that going to look like for us, the citizens of Beaver Dam? So I would like to follow up with Steve's suggestion. That Mayor Merrick, you pull together a citizen committee. Just to work with whoever it is from the city overseeing the project. And just one quick thing. I think that would go a long way for the citizens of Beaver Dam. To begin rebuilding trust that I think has been expressed to you in many different ways. That the lack of trust going forward, I think that would do a lot of good. Thank you.
Okay, next up is Jody Sechslug.
Hi, I'm Jody Sechslug and I thank you for the opportunity to, to address the council again. I just wanted to, first of all, say that I agree with both what Prescott's concerns are and Steve's. And that Mary echoed that I'd really like to see more of an opportunity for the community to have discussion. To get answers and whatever can be done for that. I really don't think anybody's going away until that happens. And I'm sure you're all getting tired of us standing up here saying a lot of the same things. I've still got all the same concerns that I had before. But just since we've got our property tax bill, I don't understand how property taxes work. Or if the data center could have affected this, you know, the bill we just got. I don't know. I've never paid attention. I know our bill for the city of Beaver Dam has gone up a lot since we bought the property, you know, 12, 13 years ago. And I, we just paid it. We never, we just figured it was legitimate. But now that we're, you know, wondering, are we footing the bill for Meta to be able and, you know, and other corporate giants to benefit? With our utilities and our property tax bills. Our Town of Trenton tax bill went up 0.3% for the Town of Trenton portion. But the City of Beaver Dam portion of our tax bill, because we have two properties, went up 5.3%. So my question is, I don't know if it could affect anything that soon. But is the additional 5% that we're all paying, I assume everybody's paying. Does it have anything to do with the TID as Prescott brought up or, you know, any of that? So I know you can't answer, but just know that we're, we'd like answers somehow. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jody. And again, if you want to hang around after the meeting, Larry can talk more specifically about the, the taxation. And how it plays in with TID districts and that kind of thing. Okay, and the last person who signed up is Wayne.
Mayor, please, Sarah is on the list, number three.
Oh, I am, you're right. I'm, I skipped her. I am so sorry. Sarah, do you want to go now? I apologize.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Zarling. I'm from Watertown. I'm here not only as someone who supports your local economy with ties to Beaver Dam. But I also will be impacted by this data center. Did you know that Watertown and Beaver Dam share the same aquifer? Did you know that this aquifer provides lifesaving water to residents all over southern Wisconsin? It's important to not just believe everything Meta says about how this project will go. They want to tell you the best thing to convince you that it's a good idea. And the closed loop system is also not as good as they say. And back to the aquifers, did you know that aquifers are simply water trapped in rock formations underground? And that once they're depleted, they can't be replenished? And did you know that droughts also help to further deplete aquifers? We know that southern Wisconsin is not immune to droughts. And then there's the Alliant ratepayers, whose rates have already increased to help pay for the increased power transmission for this data center project. And they will continue to, thanks to our utility-serving Public Service Commission. Do you know how far reaching the Alliant customer base is? Do you know that it spreads into southwest Wisconsin, even across the Mississippi River into Dubuque, Iowa? Is it possible that ratepayers in Petosse, Wisconsin and Dubuque, Iowa are also paying for this project? And let's not forget the diesel generators and any gas turbines that will likely be used to help power this gigantic facility. Those emissions will travel far beyond the bounds of Beaver Dam, poisoning residents and communities unlucky enough to be in the line of fire. Remember, we do share this planet. When a volcano erupts, the smoke and ash travels around the globe. Did you think of any of these far reaching impacts when you were thinking about this project? Or were you just thinking about how to keep approving it from your residents or of hypothetical tax revenue you might get in 20 years? Thank you.
And then number eight on the list, Mr. Owen.
All right, Mayor and all the persons, I'm Wayne, a little bit 401 Grant Street. For the last several months, you've received emails and watched us come up here and make pointed statements in regards to hyperscale AI data center. As you can tell, we haven't yet grown weary of giving you our opinions and paradigms on how it affects us and our surrounding communities. And you're actually leading up to it. I have had said it many times that, I'll say it again, that there are many facets as to why this is a contested subject. And you've heard a lot of them tonight. We've tried to make concerted effort to not overwhelm with too many subjects or topics tonight. But it is said that the fastest way to a man's heart is through his stomach. I say that the fastest way to his ire is to his wallet. Tonight, we've heard Prescott give a very clear explanation of how TIDS work and what future actions we should be kind of anticipating from y'all. I would like to make, like, I'd like to take my city officials at their face value. But let me, you know, vindicators kind of give me some question over that. Mayor, just back in November, you had a TV journalist interview you. And you said about the data skeptics, if you will, you say the following. I have a feeling that in a couple of years, once this facility is built, that those conversations will disappear. Well, if Prescott, Steve, Sarah and others people here that have spoken are correct, I pretty much guarantee that we're not going to go away. All right, so yeah, I too would like to know the honest answers to Prescott's questions and to the unresolved issues that were others had made tonight. So thanks for your time.
Okay, let's see, can I get your name and where you live?
Quint.
Quint, do you have a last name?
Yeah, Keeler. I'm from Bondilat County. I always come to, asked to come to testify with regards to the constitution.
Okay, go ahead.
Everybody in this room, city council members are here for one reason. You guys are all here to protect and preserve the rights of the people. And that's the whole basis and reason for government. So when the people show and they have questions and concerns. We need to show them a little bit of gratitude that they're actually coming and telling you, hey, we're concerned about this. And I think that the angst and the, the anger comes from the, the lack of the knowledge in the law. That we have not been taught in schools. We were all educated in the same schools. I'm going to, I'm going to show you something here, and this is Wisconsin's constitution. This is the preamble. "We, the people of Wisconsin, grateful to Almighty God for our freedom in order to secure its blessings. Form a more perfect government, ensure domestic tranquility and promote the general welfare, do establish this constitution." After that, we go to the Declaration of Rights. And this is the Bill of Rights in Wisconsin. And we were not taught this for a reason. Here it is. This is Equality Inherent Rights Text of Section 1. "All people are born equally free and independent." That means independent from government. "Have certain inherent rights, which means they came from God, not government. And among these are life, liberty and the pursuit of happiness." And to secure these rights, governments, like the city council of Beaver Dam, are instituted. Deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed. Now, everybody in here probably thinks that the people are the governed.
Mayor, it's time.
But they're not. The governed are the folks in government who consented to the contract, which is the constitution.
Okay, Sarah, I'm sorry, can you finish up your thought?
Because. Was that two minutes already?
Yeah.
Good, yep. I got one extra thing, and this is from another right of the people. And I'll read it so everybody understands. This is super important. And I want everybody to know this because it'll help everybody serve the people best. That all power is vested in and consequently derived from the people. That magistrates are their trustees and servants and at all times amenable to the people. So that's not just during election time. That's at all times. And if anybody wants to learn more about this, I'll be available afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm next on the agenda, our announcements. I have just a few for you. First of all, I would like you all to be, just be aware that the issue of our homeless population has been foremost on city official minds. Ever since we had an unusually cold early start to winter. And so since late November, early December, we've been having weekly meetings with a coalition of city officials, nonprofit organizations, county representatives. Just anybody we could invite to the table who would have information about the issue of homelessness. For those of you who maybe are not aware, the two homeless shelters that Beaver Dam has had for the past, I don't know what, five years, I think. The Central Wisconsin Action Coalition, who ran those shelters, decided for a variety of reasons to step away from that. And so they closed those shelters late last summer or early this fall. And so now we are attempting to find solutions to that problem. Particularly since we often see a lot of those homeless people in our parks when the weather is warm. But now that it's getting very cold, it became a concern. So I wanted you to be aware that we've been having these weekly discussions. I am learning so much. I think Larry is too. Because we, Larry, you know, started this process because we both recognized there was an issue, but we weren't exactly sure what to do about it. And so many of the people that we're in discussion with have a lot more experience than we do. Bottom line is, we believe we will have a temporary warming, nighttime warming location. That will be open beginning, we're hoping, in the middle of January. It all depends on the number of volunteers that we can get to staff it. Trinity United Methodist Church has been extremely generous in offering a space for us to use. And three different area nonprofits have stepped up to provide the funding. funding. Um, they're each taking funding for one month to get us through the first quarter of the year. Um, but I just wanted to update you with that information. And then in the meantime, this group of people is also looking at long-term solutions. We realize that a nighttime warming center is just a, a Band-Aid. Um, so we're looking, um, for more, uh, permanent ways to deal with, uh, the Beaver Dam homeless population. So I wanted you to be aware of that. If you have an interest, let us know. We can certainly send you the Zoom link. I know, uh, Chief Kreuzinger and, um, you know, various people have, have been involved at various levels. So, um, if you'd like to be involved, let me know. Um, and those will continue. Let's see, what else? Um, there will be no meeting, our next council meeting. It was scheduled for, uh, the 19th, but because it is Martin Luther King Day, and we don't have a lot on the agenda anyway, we will forego the January 19th meeting. Um, and then finally, um, the weekend of January 31st, since I won't see you on the 19th, I wanted to remind everyone that, uh, Saturday, January 31st is our annual Cabin Fever Fest. There is a variety of activities all around town, um, from sledding and skating to those shopping. There's something called Puzzle Palooza, which I think sounds interesting. There'll be some more. There'll be a vendor's market. There'll be all kinds of things going on at locations all around town. It's organized by, by our own recreation department, and I encourage you to take a look at our website and look at all the different activities that, uh, you and your families can participate in. So that's Saturday, January 31st. Um, any announcements from council members? Anything you want to add? Anything you want to throw out there? Alder Wild.
Just a comment on, um, the bulletin about the next Citizens Police Academy. If anybody has ever had any interest and hasn't attended this, it's really a great academy. I went to it in 2024 and enjoyed every single week. There's so much information. Um, if you have any interest in finding out, sign up for this. It's well worth your time.
Did, and did everyone, I know the chief was around passing those out, and as long as we're making pitches, I can also, um, say from experience that if you ever have, uh, the second Tuesday of the month free at five o'clock, that's our monthly Police and Fire Commission meeting, and there's always a little educational component in the beginning, either by the Police Department or the Fire Department. And, um, it's just so interesting, and you learn so much. Um, and they're open to the public. So it's just in the Fire Department conference room. I encourage you to, to attend and kind of check it out. So, okay, um, do you want to, Tracy, did you have an announcement?
Um, just a reminder that, um, tomorrow at five o'clock is the deadline for turning in nomination papers, um, if you have not already done. So, um, I think incumbents are all in at this point. Um, for any outstanding candidates, I strongly, strongly encourage you to give me more signatures than the bare minimum. We always have people that maybe have signed another set of paperwork already or aren't eligible to vote or don't live in the area that they signed for. So, um, again, it, it's very helpful if you bring me a few extra signatures. So if I have to disqualify someone, you still have enough to get on the ballot. If not, you would have to run. If you're still considering running, you'd have to run as a write-in.
Okay, good. Any other announcements? Okay, then next up is the disposition of the minutes of the common council meeting for December 15th. Can I get a motion? You all saw the minutes in your packet. Thank you, Alder Bonnet. Can I get a second? Alder Perkins? All those in favor, uh, well, I should ask any questions or comments? No. All those in favors of approval of the minutes of the last council meeting, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So the minutes are accepted. Next up is our city administrators' report.
I only have one thing to report on tonight. I just want to make sure everybody knows and gets an update. We're, we're in the process of hiring an HR specialist, and, uh, interviews will be conducted on Monday, the 12th and Friday, the 16th. We had 32 applications, and we're interviewing five people. So we think we've got a pretty good pool of candidates.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Larry. Next up, communications.
I have none this evening.
Okay, and then next is the approval of the bills between December 12th and January 2nd in the amount of $1,569,020.71. Can I get a motion? Alder Furry?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to pass the bills in the amount presented.
Thank you. And a second, Alder Wild?
I second that motion.
Very good. Any questions or comments on the bills for this month? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So the bills have passed. Next up, ordinance number one.
Ordinance number one dash 2026, amending section 66 dash 40 of the City of Beaver Dam Municipal Code. This is a first reading.
Okay, um, Jeremy, do you want to?
So if you don't mind, I'll provide a brief overview of both ordinance one and two, since they're somewhat related. Um, so we did have, um, a fairly lengthy presentation and discussion at Operations Committee on this. And if anybody does have any more detailed questions after this overview, please feel free to reach out to me before the, um, the next public hearing, and I can review that with you. But, um, so ordinance one will amend, uh, section 6640, which is replacement of lead and galvanized iron water service lines. Um, so the federal government is requiring that all municipalities replace lead service lines from the main all the way into the house within the next 10 years. Um, so in order to accomplish this, uh, we are going to have to take a little more proactive approach rather than just during full street reconstruction projects where we are replacing the water main. Um, so the current ordinance is geared toward replacement during full reconstruction projects or, uh, some type of defect in the, in the line such as a, as a water leak. Um, this ordinance revision will then, will allow us to require replacement during a lead service line project. So that would be specific toward replacing this. Um, so that is what the, the revisions are geared toward. Um, and as far as ordinance number two, um, that's the sanitary sewer lateral that's laying in the same trench as the water service line. Um, again, similarly, uh, we are revising ordinance, uh, so that it would go beyond just a full street and utility reconstruction project to allow us to require replacement if that sanitary lateral is defective as part of a lead service line replacement project. So hopefully, like I said, that's a fairly quick overview, but if anybody has, you know, specific questions, please feel free to reach out to me.
Good. And any questions for Jeremy at this point? And again, this, because this is our first reading, we don't have to discuss it now, but, um, I think it's good to give you an opportunity to think about it, um, for the next two weeks because we will be voting on both of these, um, ordinances. Well, no, I guess it'll be a month because we're not meeting on the 19th. So you'll have a month. But also to, um, direct your constituents' questions to where they need to be.
Mayor, Alder's up. Could, could Jeremy address what, what's changed with funding? Um, because I know the city's had a long program of, um, grant-funded line replacement, and that, that has changed, right? And that, that's where the city, that's my understanding is that funding is now gone, and every city's being directed to basically do it theirselves. And that, is that correct, Jeremy, on the background?
Yeah, in the city of Beaver Dam, we currently do not have any grant funding for this. Um, this isn't necessarily part of this ordinance, but that would be, you know, a future discussion, how we will end up funding these replacements. But yeah, there is no, uh, grant funding available to the city of Beaver Dam currently.
Thank you.
Jeremy, before you go, uh, we had a resident ask a, a question about the size or the amount of impact this might have. Can you talk a little bit about how many streets or how many residences you believe that this would impact?
Yeah, I mean, the, the streets are, are scattered, you know, through, throughout the city and the, the older parts of, of, uh, the development or older parts of town. Um, but there are approximately 1,100 to 1,200, uh, properties that are affected by
Okay, good. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Jeremy. So, um, I guess that takes us to ordinance number two.
Ordinance number two dash 2026, amending section 66 dash 41 of the City of Beaver Dam Municipal Code. This is a first reading as well.
And again, the ordinance one and two are coupled together because of the fact that, um, it would be more cost-effective to replace both the sanitary sewer and the, um, uh, water lines. So, uh, any questions or concerns about that one? Okay. Next up are resolutions. Resolution number one.
Resolution number one dash 2026, a resolution authorizing the submission of the fiscal year 2026 interoperable radio grant.
Okay, and Chief, were you going to talk about that one? Or? I would love for you to. And I, and I don't have to.
All right, I'll just give you kind of a rundown. Um, in law enforcement, communication is really important that we all talk to each other. So this involves EMS, involves fire, and involves the Beaver Dam Police Department, and involves the Sheriff's Office. So everybody has to talk. So the only way we can talk is we all have to be on the same page, or we have to be on the same system. Problem is, we're not all on the same system. We're on different systems. Um, so what happened with, um, the county is their system started to have a lot of problems where they had a lot of dead spots, and they decided to put a committee together to decide what to do. So there's like, on that committee are fire, police, the Sheriff's Department, Dodge County Emergency Management, some county board members. They're on this group, and they have meetings to discuss what we're going to do with this problem. So the way to get this grant, it's a $50,000 grant, and we have to match 20%, which is 10, the 10,000, which is what we have in our budget for this year. We've been holding off on radios for the last several years because we knew this was coming, and we knew there were going to be some changes. We just didn't know what they were. So the goal of this is to be able to get this grant to go towards this radio system. Now, it doesn't affect all our towers, because we have four towers. We have the North Tower, we have the one that we leased from the radio station, we have the one right out here, and then we have the one on the South Side. Doesn't affect that equipment. It's talking about portable radios and squad radios. That's what the grant is for, to be able to talk to each other. So we're hoping at the end, it's all compatible. So if we don't get this system, um, we can't talk to them. They're on their own system. So that means Juneau, Horicon, Dodge would be on their system, and we would be on our system, and nobody could talk to each other because we're on two separate systems. So the goal of this is to get everybody to talk together, to be able to communicate with each other and be on the same side, same page with new, modern technology. The county has some, a system that's probably 20, 25 years old. It's, it's, so the goal is to get it updated. So they have to put money toward it. And every community can apply for the $50,000 grant. So we're going to apply for the $50,000 grant to help us offset some of that cost. Because with new technology, prices go up. So that's how it works. So, thank you.
Good. Any questions for the chief? Okay, then I guess we're ready to call the roll.
Bonnet?
Yes.
Burnett? Bury?
Did we get a motion?
Oh, wait, I was just going to say, we didn't have a motion or a second. We just jumped right to the chief. Yeah. Uh, can I get a motion? Alder Bonnet?
Approve resolution one, 2026.
Thank you. And a second, Alder Gansky.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Now we need to call-
Now we're ready. Okay. Take two. Bierman?
Yes.
Bonnet? Burnett? Bury?
Aye.
Flaherty?
Aye.
Gansky?
Aye.
Hiley?
Aye.
Keel?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Perkins?
Aye.
Wild?
Aye.
Yads?
Aye.
Zapp?
So the resolution carries. Uh, next up on the agenda, let's see, um, item number five is just a, a typo, so you can, uh, ignore that. Next up, our mayoral appointments. Um, I just want to point out that, um, these are for renewing the members of the Board of Review and the Beaver Dam Lake Development Corporation. Both of these committees, the citizens are on for a one-year term, so each year we have to renew them. All of the names that you see are repeats from last year except for one, um, citizen on the Board of Review, Jamie Klockow. Um, he is new. He's replacing, um, Sheena Black, who has served for many years and, um, decided to step down. But otherwise, it's the same list of, uh, people that you saw last year at this time. So, uh, oh, and then don't forget, uh, Joe Kern, he's on the back. But that's just automatically as, um, the Director of Parks and Forestry, he becomes the Weed Commissioner. So that's an added bonus. By the way, before we vote, uh, I would like to point out, if you haven't noticed, we have a new clock. And I don't know if, I don't know if Joe Kern or John Newman, I'm not sure when the new clock came into play.
It came in today, when the old one finally died a slow, very, very painful death. I think it was the original clock.
Wow, okay. But anyway, I just wanted to point that out. Um, so I think we can just do this on a voice vote, right?
Sure.
So, um, do, uh, we need a motion to accept the mayoral appointments.
Uh, motion to accept the appointments as presented, please.
Thank you. And a second, Alder Keel?
I'll second.
Any questions or discussion? Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any, sorry, heck. Very good. And I need a motion to adjourn. Alder Burnett?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Alder Bierman?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and we'll see you in February.